Okay, good evening. This is a continuation of the February 9th, 2016 Board of Education meeting. The Board has been in closed session for employment of employees since 6:30. And we have seven Board members present, six present here, and Emily Bastido is present via teleconference. Over there is the telephone, so Emily will be participating. Okay, can we rise? Oh. Oh, and right, and the Board approved for her to participate due to her business commitments. Okay, rise for the pledge, please.
Pledge and reasons to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first is public comments. Are there any public comments tonight? We have Jan Dornar signed up.
I'm Jan Dornar, representing the Legal Women Voters of Elmhurst. In a circle report of the Commission on Youth Voting and Civic Knowledge from 2013, it stated their research showed that while schools matter, civic education must be a shared responsibility. It also reported that the average 18- to 24-year-olds turnout in presidential years between '72 and 2012 was less than 44 percent. Civic education is a low priority for most policymakers, and the idea for engaging young people in politics has been controversial. In that vein, I'd like to tell you that the DuPage Election Commission and the League of Women Voters of Elmhurst partnered to bring mock primary elections to York High School on this Friday. We'll be teaching students the voting mechanics so that piece will not deter the voters. For Friday, the DuPage Election Commission will lend the League 10 voting booths, which will set up on the third floor of the York Academic Building in front of the "Freedom Isn't Free" mural. The Election Commission has designed a PDF ballot for both the Republican and Democratic candidates vying to represent their party as the presidential nominees. League members will act as election judges or train student volunteers to be election judges for the day, and the York young politicians will hand-count the ballots. This year in Illinois, all 17-year-olds who will be 18 on or before the general election, which is November 8th, are eligible to register and vote in the primary. Those eligible York students will be registering online before next Tuesday, or if needed, we can register them by paper on Friday. We're excited to be able to help with this learning experience, and I assure that this will be a meaningful collaboration. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to reports and presentations. We have several recognitions tonight. The first is the Illinois Music Educators Association, ILMEA, All-State Selectees. Bill Riddle and Gina. Oh, sorry, okay, sorry. I'll go first.
It's my honor and pleasure this evening to introduce you to 22 of our outstanding York High School musicians who've been recognized by the state as being All-State musicians for the 2015-2016 school year. The organization that is responsible for bestowing this honor is named the Illinois Music Educators Association, or ILMEA. Believe me, this is no small feat for any student that earns this All-State distinction. Tonight, I'd also like to recognize our music faculty from York High School, Becky Marionetti, Ray Ostwald, Mike Pavlik, and Chris Gemco, as well as recognize our fellow music educators from our middle schools and elementary school 205 music staff. Could we have those in attendance stand, our staff? ILMEA is a professional organization with the mission to promote lifelong music learning and to provide leadership for music education. The process begins in October when students from all over the state of Illinois individually audition on a set of predetermined music and technical exercises. The state is divided into nine different districts, and York High School is a member of District 1, one of the largest and most competitive districts of the state. In District 1 alone, there are approximately 3,000 students from 75 different schools that audition for the honor of being selected into All-District Band, All-District Jazz Ensemble, All-District Orchestra, and All-District Choir. There were also students from across the state, including our own school, that submitted original compositions and arrangements to be reviewed and adjudicated for state recognition. This year, York High School was well-represented at the district festival with 54 of our students selected for the various groups. The All-State Festival concerts were presented last November, actually right here for the first time at Elmhurst College. After the All-District Festival, the students receiving the highest scores in each of the nine districts are selected to participate in the All-State Music Festival, which took place just a couple of weeks ago in Peoria from January 27th through the 30th. Students that were selected for All-State Recognition spent three days in Peoria to be part of performing groups that comprised the top high school musicians from across the state. This experience culminated on a concert on the final day of those three days. I'd now like to recognize these students. First, can we congratulate them together? Join me in congratulating the outstanding accomplishments of these 22 talented music students. As you can see, we don't have all 22 with us tonight, but I'd like to recognize each one individually and with their instrument that they play or as vocalists. Joel Chu, violin; Amy Choi, flute; Daphne David, clarinet; Jack Davis, double bass; Andrew French, double bass; Maggie Greer, alto; Michael Griffin, trombone; Robert Kildow, clarinet; Emily Landreth, alto; Tatum Langley, alto; Ella Lee, violin; Liz Mazaco, violin; Katie Mitchell, soprano; Rachel Orem, soprano; Nathan Rego, bass; Kevin Sheehan, cello; Kira Stanton, violin; Lena Stojokovic, alto; Brian Struck, French horn; Danny Stumpf, trombone; Michael Stumpf, trumpet; and Leah Widmire, viola. Let's give them another hand, please. Congratulations.
It's truly an honor to recognize these amazing students from amazing families led by amazing professionals here in the district. It's a great community to live in and very happy to be a part of it. Let me read the proclamation. Whereas the Illinois Music Educators Association competitions are considered the most prestigious statewide student recognition program in music education, and whereas high school musicians undergo stringent auditions competing against students from one of nine individual ILMEA districts, followed by the qualifying students earning a place in the district's honor ensemble from which the All-State musicians are chosen, and whereas this program recognizes some of the best musicians in the state of Illinois and rewards excellence on the part of the individual students while encouraging further music study and artistry. And whereas York Community High School students Joel Chu, violin; Amy Choi, flute; Daphne David, clarinet; John Davis, double bass; Andrew French, double bass; Margaret Greer, alto voice; Michael Griffin, trombone; Robert Kildow, clarinet; Emily Landreth, alto voice; Tatum Langley, alto voice; Ella Lee, violin; Elizabeth Mazaco, violin; Catherine Mitchell, soprano voice; Rachel Orem, soprano voice; Nathan Rego, bass voice; Kevin Sheehan, cello; Kira Stanton, viola; Brian Struck, French horn; Lena Stojokovic, alto voice; Daniel Stumpf, trumpet; Michael Stumpf, trumpet; and Leah Widmire, viola, were awarded All-State recognition in their particular musical specialty and performed in the All-State Band, Chorus, and Orchestra Festival on January 27th to 30th, 2016 at the Illinois Music Educators All-State Convention Festival in Peoria, Illinois. And whereas this accomplishment brings pride and prestige to York Community High School, District 205, and the community, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education and Administration of Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 express congratulations to these students, their parents, and faculty members of the York Performing Arts Division, Chairman Bill Riddle, Christopher Gemco, Rebecca Marionetti, Ray Ostwald, Michael Pavlik, Anna Sapashnikov, and Michelle Skirlock for this outstanding accomplishment. Thank you all. All right. You're gonna have to have some help. All right. Shake your hand and give it to her. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. 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 Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. 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 Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Good job. Congratulations. Congratulations. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Congratulations. Good job. Oh, will you? Yeah, absolutely. For the team, thank you all. Thank you.
Okay. Next is the Illinois Chapter of the American String Teachers Association Outstanding School Educator Award. Gina, thanks.
Good evening. I am Gina Pogreter, the very proud principal. Red button. The button. There we go. I am Gina Pogreter, the very proud principal at Churchville Middle School, and it is my honor and privilege to introduce a legend in the Elmhurst Music Department tonight. While everyone who knows Barbara is one of the finest middle school orchestra directors in the country, you may not realize that she began her career in District 205 in 1980 at Jefferson Elementary School as a reading tutor and assistant in a kindergarten classroom for three years. After earning her master's degree, Ms. Scott returned to Elmhurst in 1985, and she has been the orchestra director at Churchville Middle School for the past 31 years. In addition to teaching at Churchville, Ms. Scott has led the string program at Conrad Fisher and Emerson Elementary Schools and has taught strings at Field and Jefferson Schools as well. Over the years, Ms. Scott has also taught various fourth and fifth grade band class lessons at Conrad Fisher, Emerson, Field, Jefferson, Addison, Lincoln, and Hawthorne Elementary Schools. She has taught summer orchestra programs at Churchville, Sandberg, and Bryan, and Ms. Scott has also directed elementary and middle school orchestras at Blue Lake Fine Arts Camp and Interlochen Arts Camp, both in Michigan. Ms. Scott has served on the faculty at Vandercook College of Music in Chicago, where she taught undergraduate and graduate level classes in string methods and applied music. When she began at Churchville, the orchestra consisted of only 14 students. Today, we have an orchestra of 57 and a full orchestra of 85 students. We currently have a string, we have 106 string students between Churchville, Emerson, and Fisher. Ms. Scott isn't just an outstanding musician and educator, she is an advocate for children and the arts. Our orchestra program grew because of Ms. Scott's advocacy for children. Barbara believes that any child who wants to learn to play an instrument should be able to regardless of cost. Students who could not afford an instrument suddenly received a scholarship and had an instrument to play at the very next rehearsal. These instruments were always provided by the Scott Scholarship Fund. Barbara provides experiences and lessons of a lifetime for our students. Students reported that they have learned teamwork, fair play, dedication, determination, and grit from Ms. Scott in orchestra. Her students feel as though they have a voice, an opinion, and that every contribution matters. When I asked the students to describe Ms. Scott, this is where it gets interesting, they said she was brilliant, intense, quirky, silly, hardworking, believes in us, knows we can always get better, goofy, inspirational, and my personal favorite, the ultimate middle school compliment when said with a smile and an eye roll, so weird. She provides amazing experiences for our students by flying in world-renowned Rangers at her own expense, such as Dr. Sandy Dakau to work with our students. In fact, in honor of Barbara's Illinois Outstanding Educator Award, Dr. Dakau arranged a new piece, a Mozart minuet, which she dedicated to Ms. Scott and to Churchville Middle School. The piece will have the dedication printed on the inside cover of the score forever. I can't think of a better honor for all that Barbara has done for our students and the music program for Churchville and for Elmhurst. While Barbara has chosen to retire from public education this year, she has created a legacy which will last for generations. The shoes she leaves behind are huge, but the program she has created is simply astounding. She will never leave music, she will now simply have more time to pursue her passion for genealogy. With that, I would like to introduce to you the legendary Barbara Scott, the 2016 Illinois American String Teacher Association Outstanding Teacher.
Thanks, everybody. Those of you who are still here, Gina, I can't follow you now with that, but I did write down a few things. And I would like to thank the Board of Education for their proclamation recognizing my Illinois ASTA award. I would also like to thank Marion Messino for nominating me. Marion, give a wave. Marion's in the back. Many past winners of this award have been nominated by their colleagues. To have been nominated by a former student who is now a colleague makes this award even more special. I started Marion on the string bass in 1994 at Emerson School. And when she was in middle school, she went through a middle school phase where she liked orchestra, but she didn't care about anything else, and kind of got in a little bit of trouble at Churchville because of that. Well, I had been in that same position over at Albright Middle School a number of years before her, and I knew I was going to be an orchestra director, so when orchestra was over, I just chose to leave school because I didn't need anything else during the rest of the day. So when Marion was having troubles, I was invited to a staffing, and they're saying, "Well, what do you do to help her? You know, how come she'll respond to you?" And I said, "Look, she's got herself in a hole. She needs a hand. Are you going to reach down and pull her out, or are you going to push her further down in?" We got her out of her hole. She's a music teacher now. Thanks, Mar. I would like to thank the Churchville Administration, Gina Pogreter, and Peter Cunningham for not only supporting my work at Churchville, but empowering my work at Churchville. I just feel like whatever needs to be done, I can go and say to Gina or Peter, "I need your help with this," and whatever it is, happens. I would like to thank my colleagues in the music department, especially Cindy Kraus, our Churchville Band Director, for her daily collaboration. Might call it girly gripe sessions, but we'll be professional and we'll call it daily collaboration. And providing the wind, brass, and percussion section for our full orchestra. Elmhurst District 205 has long been recognized for having an exemplary instrumental music program. Other districts look to Elmhurst as a model program because our offerings to students begin in the fourth grade, provide both small and large group instruction, and provide a comprehensive schedule of concerts, festivals, and supplementary performance opportunities such as ILMEA festivals. It's easy to be an excellent music teacher in Elmhurst because Elmhurst offers an excellent and well-articulated music program, beginning in elementary general music, all the way through the many performing arts opportunities at York. For the past 31 years, I have been blessed in my work at Churchville and District 205. Elmhurst has been good to me, and the music program here has allowed my efforts to make a positive impact in the lives of many students. I think there's about 1,700 of them. I have all my old gradebooks, and I was looking through it, and I quit counting at 1,500. That was enough. District administrators, teachers, support staff, parents, family, students, and everyone who has supported the music program in Elmhurst all share the applause tonight. Thank you so very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Gina, that was a great introduction. Barbara, it's a great acceptance speech. I can't do better, and I have the wisdom not to try, except to say that Barbara, you're right. We have a great music program in this district, and in the northern part of our district, that greatness begins with you. Thank you for your dedication and service. So our proclamation tonight reads, "Whereas the American String Teachers Association, or the ASTA, founded more than 60 years ago, is a membership organization for string and orchestra teachers and players, helping them to develop and refine their careers. And whereas the Illinois Chapter of the ASTA annually awards the Outstanding School Educator Award to one teacher who has achieved and maintained excellence in their program or who has been extraordinarily successful in building a new program or revitalizing an existing one through the use of innovative teaching techniques and creative connections with the community. And whereas Barbara Scott, Churchville Middle School Orchestra Director, was nominated for the award by Marion Messino, her former music student, who currently serves as the orchestra director at Fairview South School in Skokie, and whereas, under her 31-year direction, the Churchville Orchestra enrollment has more than doubled from 47 to 106 string students in grades four through eight. And whereas, on January 29th, 2016, Ms. Scott received the Outstanding School Educator Award at the 2015 Illinois ASTA Awards Luncheon held at the Illinois Music Education Conference in Peoria, and whereas this accomplishment brings pride and prestige to Churchville Middle School, District 205, and our community, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education and the Administration of Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 express congratulations to Barbara Scott for this outstanding achievement." Barbara, again, thank you.
Everybody, thank you.
We have one shining star recognition. Chris?
I understand Kelly has the same sickness that I guess most of us have either experienced or are in the middle of, and is not with us tonight, but we'd like to read the shining star nonetheless. Kelly Aturbidi, second-grade teacher at Hawthorne, nominated by Jerry Sorrentino. To encourage her class to embrace a student with severe health issues, Kelly consistently came up with innovative ways to make the student feel better about himself and want to be with his peers. When that was no longer possible, she worked with students and staff to find ways to keep the student in their minds. Kelly participated in the Wizards basketball game at the urging of the student and with his advice on taking shots, arranged for Benny the Bull to visit the class and students for fun and support, arranged an all-school hat day to support the student when his hair loss reoccurred, collected money and purchased green lights for all staff to decorate the school in support of the student and his family, worked with the custodian to creatively use free materials to green up the exterior of the school, and continues to support the student's family emotionally. So thank you very much, Kelly.
Okay, thanks. Moving on to student achievement objectives.
Just for ease, because of the presenters, we're going to switch up the order a little bit, and provide it's okay, and do the cohort next, and then do SACED. That way, Michelle can just stay up here and keep going if that's all right. So just an update on what we've been doing with our principals. January Principals Meeting, we finished up the book Cultures Built to Last: Systematic PLCs at Work. That's a Rick Dufour, Michael Fulham book. We've been studying that throughout the year. Rob Wagner, Jason Crockett, Jane Bailey, Susan Conratt, and Charles Brandell facilitated a group learning activity based on the final chapter of that book, Sustaining the Improvement Process. And then we began our work with a Michael Fulham book called The Principle: Three Keys to Maximizing Effectiveness. And the first chapter we took a look at in that book is Vices and Virtues. Diana Smith, Linda Farrenbacher, Nikki Tammaru, Leslie Weber, and Connie Chester led that portion of the meeting. And then, at the grade-level principle meetings last month, principals concluded their study of the Jan Schappui book Seven Strategies of Assessment for Learning, and the student achievement objectives, balanced assessment, is a major component of that, and you'll learn more in a minute, but Schappui was one of the featured presenters at the January 29th Institute Day and is considered one of the leaders in the field, so we were very fortunate to have her here. And the goal, obviously, will be to continue that work in our everyday, you know, our everyday approach in the classroom moving forward. So, Michelle?
January 29th was an Institute Day. The Madison staff engaged in a conversation with Pat Chamberlain on culturally and linguistically responsive practices for communication. Our K-8 social worker psychologists and middle school counselors engaged in conversations about crisis intervention for students with heightened anxiety and school avoidance. They were able to have a speaker from Alexian Brothers come in and work with them. Our K-8 speech and language pathologists looked at their role on a literacy team. How does a speech and language pathologist work on a literacy team? And how do they work on comprehension and phonological awareness? York, entire York staff did an activity, a day where they had about crisis intervention for students with heightened anxiety and school avoidance. They were able to have a speaker from Alexian Brothers come in and work with them. Our K-8 speech and language pathologists looked at their role on a literacy team. How does a speech and language pathologist work on a literacy team? And how do they work on comprehension and phonological awareness? York, entire York staff did an activity, a day where they had multiple seminars. They called them seminars. And what they did was, the department chairs met with their teachers and found out where their needs were for some professional learning topics. And then, the department chairs went and found the teachers to present, and teachers put together 45, or no, wait, an hour and 15 minutes, an hour-long session, where they would go in and they would do things such as using DOK, which is Depth of Knowledge, I apologize that I did not spell that out, Depth of Knowledge Levels, to analyze student learning. Address it, assess it, summaries and relationships. The power of student choice, leading students to learning not just apps. Molecular gastronomy in the kitchen. And people were able to sign up and attend those sessions. There were also some sessions that were led by students, getting to our student achievement plan of student engagement, making sure students are engaged in their learning. York was able to highlight that by having some of their students there, running some of the seminars alongside teachers. They did this exact same way last year. I was able to attend it, it was very successful. I was not able to attend it this year because I was with the entire rest of K-8 staff, about 400 staff members, at the Drury Lane Oakbrook, where half of them saw Dylan William. We brought him back. If you recall, he wrote the book Embedding Formative Assessment, which we read last year. Some of our staff went to see him last year. We brought him back for the staff that did not get to see him. And then, the other half saw Jan Schappui, who wrote the book Seven Strategies of Assessment for Learning. They are both very much considered top people to talk to in terms of formative assessment, which if you think about our student achievement plans, assessment literacy is one of our student achievement plans. So, as Dr. Morier said, we will continue this work through the rest of this year and into next year. Okay. Ready to go on? Do we have a clicker?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. We are excited to, tonight, to share with you an update to the current cohort program at York High School. Just to remind you, the cohort program is a group where students coming in as freshmen go into Cohort English 9, Cohort, Cohort, you know, you can't say your Rs to say this word so many times, it's awful, World Studies, and Academic Literacy, and then Cohort, another cohort period. There's four periods within the school day that the kids were, because of the word cohort, which is by definition, you rotate with, you go with the group, they are in those four classes together. Students are identified through some assessment data, which Ryan will be sharing with you in a little bit. But every year, York District Administration teachers, we always want to look at programs that we offer students and see if they're meeting the needs that we have. As we, and cohort is no different, York has looked at it every year since its inception. What we have found through the years are the following. We have been out of compliance with the 70/30 rule for special education students. We have seen less growth than we anticipated for students in the cohort program. For some students, their schedule became so dictated with those four periods that some are not in a science class during freshman year. And the cohort students are not with their grade-level peers in the English and World Study classes. Due to these findings, we are here tonight to share with you some modifications to the cohort program. The most important modification is the name will not be cohort, because as I said before, cohort implies that the group moves together. This will not be the case. We strongly believe, however, that this new proposal will actually intensify the support for our students, as well as give them the exposure to grade-level content and peers they need to be successful. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Ryan Doherty, English Department Chair at York High School.
Hi, I'm Ryan Doherty, Class of 89. I'm really happy to be here talking today about the cohort program. And I just want to stress that while I'm standing here, I'm really representing the work of a lot of people that came before me, with Chris and Diana at the high school, the IAC team, Jake Martin, and Charles Urbando, a lot of people before me, including the teachers in the cohort program. But more importantly, I just want to make sure, and I'm stressing that, I'm really talking about the kids who struggle with literacy in our school. And as Ms. Doherty actually mentioned earlier, one of the most important things is we want to make sure that they're citizens that can really read the world. And that comes in a lot of different forms. And our kids struggle in the cohort program. They struggle with being able to analyze data. They struggle with being able to synthesize multiple challenging texts, finding relationships between texts. And so, we developed the cohort program really to catch those kids, to make sure that by the time they're juniors and seniors, that whatever door they want to open, it's not locked to them. And so, this intervention as a freshman became really important. And so, as mentioned earlier, Michelle talked about the prior structure, English 9 and World Studies. I do want to stress that it is the same curriculum, non-cohort and cohort, it is the same curriculum, English 9 and World Studies. It's just that the classes were smaller, it was classes of 20 rather than 30. And then, the academic literacy and the learning cohort period, which helps kids with organization, kind of staying on top of their grades with their teachers, doing a little reteaching if needed. And while the structure is going to be modified, I think the heart of the cohort program, which is intensive, directed literacy help, is really going to stay with us. And so, we really consider that really the heart of the program, while, you know, the structure may be changing. So, I can't really talk about the program unless I really talk about the faces of cohort. It breaks my heart a little bit that I'm about to talk about numbers, because our kids are so much more than numbers. But I think it's important to see the levels of reading that the kids come in with, that are identified as cohort. I'm not going to read everything on that slide, but I do want to point out that 35 of the kids in the current cohort program read at the 6th grade level or below, when they came to us. A couple of them, you know, I think it was about seven or eight of them, reading at 4th, 3rd, or 2nd grade levels. And that some of our kids come in and they're reading at grade level, or maybe even a little bit above, but their writing skills are really low, their organization is really low, and they don't have those academic skills that they need to be successful. As we work with those kids, we do try to make sure that we're moving them into appropriate placement. If we have someone that's reading at 11th grade by the end of that first semester, and their writing is back there, we move them into, or out of academic literacy, into a general education, English 9 or World Studies class. There are some other things that are indicators of our kids. If you notice, the typical Gen Ed English 9 student will come in with a MAP score of 223. Our cohort kids on average come in at 214. And also, their fluency is, they struggle. And I think, you know, as we go through trends in education, we talk about, you know, reading aloud in class and all those kinds of things. We all know that if a student reads aloud to the class and their fluency is low, it actually inhibits the comprehension of everyone else who's listening. And so, we really do have to work with them on fluency. And that's something that we do in our academic literacy classes. So, here are some targeted areas. Some of them are a little cut off here at the end, that's okay. But the top four, those are ones that we really have to hit and remediate with our kids, so they can actually get to words and phrases in context, especially as we move towards an SAT. Relationships is difficult. It's not only within the text, it's actually across texts. Generalizations and conclusions, and then author's intent. Not only how is it structured, but what is an author's intention for structuring it that way? But there's a lot of layers that we have to get to, that we actually do with our academic literacy course. And I think with the modification of the program, you'll see that we're able to target them even more specifically. So, here is the instructional level of cohort students. I'm just going to talk about them as a grade band. That typically, our kids on the Explorer will score an 11 or a 12 coming in, which means that it's possible that at their end of their junior year, without intervention, they may be scoring a 15 or a 16 on the ACT. We know that the York average is a 24.2, which we're really proud of. Here is what that instructional band looks like. I've highlighted a couple of words, simple, clear, somewhat challenging, clearly indicated, clearly stated, direct, straightforward text. Now, if we know that by the end of their junior year, they need to be working in complex texts, synthesizing multiple texts, that we have to have a direct intervention that's going to catch them, so we can catch them up. Here's what we've done so far in our cohort program. You'll see that there's two bands, one is highlighted in yellow, and one is highlighted in blue. The yellow is prior to the cohort program. And so, we're going to be looking right here. That prior to the cohort program, kids that would have been identified by their junior year, they had between 4 and 4.8 growth from the Explorer to the ACT. We want to see average of 5.2 or higher. Since the cohort program has been implemented, we have been 6.89, 5.04, and 5.71 growth in reading. That is, I think, a really great statistic to show what a direct intervention can do. And I think with the modifications to the program, we're going to be able to do even better than that. Because we don't want to just get our kids to a 20 or a 21 on the ACT, we at least want to get them to that 24 average. So, our proposal for a modification to the program, first, we want to integrate the students into general English 9 and general World Studies. Part of that reason is to make sure that they are getting the academic behaviors and the academic benefits from kids who maybe don't struggle as much as they do in literacy. As those kids are spread through the 12 or 13 freshman sections that we have, that they will be able to have the benefit of the academic behaviors of their peers, seeing positive role models in class, so that we can then look at academic literacy to target them with a pre-teach, reteach model. I was fortunate enough to be in Arizona last week at the National PLC Conference with Dufour, and I saw Mike Mattos. And the exciting part of it is that when he talked about direct interventions, he specifically said, what you need to do is not look at kids with Ds and Fs, you need to look at specific skills, target them in a co-teaching model, pre-teaching and reteaching skills, so that they can gain efficacy when they go into their general ed classes. And I turned to Chris and Diana, said, "That's awesome, that is exactly what we proposed for the academic literacy program." So, we propose it being co-taught with a literacy specialist and a special education teacher. We are fortunate to have two phenomenal literacy coaches that are reading specialists. One of our other literacy coaches, you know, has taught college comp. We also have special ed teachers within the English Department and Social Studies Department, so that when we work in this co-teaching model, we actually are proposing that they have all of the sections during one period. And that's going to allow us to do flexible grouping. So, they may be assigned to three or four different sections of teachers, but if the data says, these kids need work on drawing conclusions, but these kids need to work on interpreting details, we can actually flex the groupings within that period, because it's all happening during that same period. We're also going to be able to look at classes, look at all of the data, and then target our specific interventions for those. If they're working on a DBQ in World Studies, we're going to be able to pre-teach that, so that when they get to class, they have that confidence, they'll be able to speak up in class, and they'll be able to have their peers look at them as a role model, because they've been pre-taught skills, and they gain that confidence, and then maybe those academic behaviors start to kick in a little bit faster. And that's what we're hoping with this, our new modifications, is going to happen for our cohort kids, to spur even additional growth beyond, you know, all of the people that have worked on this program so hard before me. Part of what this, you know, the success of this program is dependent on having a lot of collaboration with the teachers. That is not only the teachers here, but we're collaborating with the English 9 and the World Studies Program. And so, they're not only collaborating with their co-teacher, all four sets of co-teachers are collaborating, and they are collaborating with the English 9 and World Studies Program, so that everyone's on the same page, and we're not just looking at kids who struggle with grades. We're looking at the skills they're struggling with, so that we can target it more effectively.
So, what is required to modify the current structure? There will be some professional learning opportunity. See instructional design, thinking about that reteach, preteach, what does that academic literacy class need to look at, looking at the, you know, the ability to look at the curriculum of English 9 and World Studies, to have that conversation. And it says co-teaching there, I'd like to add co-planning. I think what's really crucial is that ability for those teachers to plan together, to talk about what the students will be doing and what they need to be supporting them in, in that academic literacy class. Build capacity in special education staff with a content area background. You know, the ability to have, I think there's nothing better than the thought that we would have a reading specialist, a special educator, English teacher, and a World Studies teacher talking. Because they are your four areas of expertise then, for these students. And having that ability to think through, how do we best support them? And then, we already have some supplemental materials, but we would need additional supplemental materials. What are the materials we would need with leveled readings? Because as you saw, we have kids of all different reading levels. It's not about the text, it's about the skills we're trying to get the kids, but making sure that we're putting them in a text that's appropriate for that child, and scaffolding that text, so that by the time they're juniors and seniors, they are able to engage in a more complex text individually. So, that's what we plan to move forward with this summer, with some support for them. And that's the presentation.
Should we start, just questions for all three topics at once? We could do that. Okay, go ahead, Margaret.
Thank you. My question's actually regarding the cohort program. First, thank you very much. I love the proposal and the idea of building on what was already successful and making modifications to that. I know, no one wants to give up that growth that we have experienced there. So that is, that's a key piece that we want to keep focused on. My question, and this is, this is a implementation question, but I'm just thinking through this. You mentioned different texts in the same classroom. Is that something that currently exists today, that students in the same class will read different books? And so, if that is, yes?
So, I wouldn't say that they read different books, I would say that they read leveled readings. So if it's an article about, you know, crisis in the Middle East, that we will pull articles that have the same content, but the reading is leveled. And so, the sentence structures will be shorter to make them more manageable, the paragraphs will be shorter. And so, our reading specialists will pull multiple articles, so that the kids are responding, they're still finding the same main idea or detail, but they're working with it in a different way. They're also grouped in ability levels at that point.
Okay. Because that is, that is my thought, and you are the professionals, and I know you know how to handle this, I want to be sure that we have our students, that they feel very comfortable and confident in that, in that classroom, so they're not feeling like they're singled out in that classroom.
Oh yeah, no, so, for example, if we had four sections, there'd be eight teachers with our, you know, 88 kids. And then, we would flex-group them. So, we would put up who's in what group, and for example, they may all be working on the same article, they're just looking at it with a different teacher, maybe with a slightly different skill. Because some of those kids that are coming into academic literacy are right at that top, do I, do I need this class, can I be pushed forward? So those kids are going to be getting enrichment, while some of our kids are going to be getting pretty substantial remediation, to make sure that we're all moving them forward to get ready for English 10. Thank you.
Okay. Jim?
This is also about cohort. First of all, Ryan, your enthusiasm is contagious.
Oh, thanks.
Thanks. I just want to say, thanks for coming back to us. The board hasn't reviewed the cohort program since it was implemented, so it is great to hear of the success that it's been.
Thank you.
And so, please, promise us you'll come back every two or three years, hopefully two, and tell us about the progress you're making, the modifications you're making. You know, I think this revamp of the program is a great experiment to try. And I also want to say, thank you for returning that science option to those kids that it was denied from under the old structure. And I think clearly, science education is important freshman year.
So, we would put up who's in what group, and, for example, they may all be working on the same article, they're just looking at it with a different teacher, maybe with a slightly different skill. Because some of those kids that are coming into academic literacy are right at that top, "Do I, do I need this class? Can I be pushed forward?" So, those kids are going to be getting enrichment, while some of our kids are going to be getting pretty substantial remediation, to make sure that we're all moving them forward to get ready for English 10. Thank you.
Okay. Jim?
This is also about cohort. First of all, Ryan, your enthusiasm is contagious.
Oh, thanks.
Thanks. I just want to say, thanks for coming back to us. The board hasn't reviewed the cohort program since it was implemented. So, it is great to hear of the success that it's been.
Thank you.
And so, please, promise us you'll come back every two or three years, hopefully two, and tell us about the progress you're making, the modifications you're making. You know, I think this, this revamp of the program is a great experiment to try. And I also want to say, thank you for returning that science option to those kids that it was denied from under the old structure. And I think clearly, science education is important freshman year. And I just have one question. You know, I see the e-Pass growth success that you've had.
Yeah.
And you don't need to tell us what it is if you decide to do this, but I would encourage you to pick a number and try to hit that number for e-Pass growth, and then come back to us and tell us about your success in that. It looks like, kind of on average, pre-cohort it was four and a half, post-cohort it was high fives.
Yep. Yeah, my average is, I'm shooting for seven. So, yeah.
I think that's outstanding.
Yeah, just like with the ACT growth, I think when I, when I came to York, my goal was a 24.5 on the grammar section, and we got a 24.3. 0.8 growth in one year, which is crazy growth.
That is.
Which I'm super proud of, because of the hard work of the English staff. And so, yeah, we're, we're shooting for seven.
All right.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And so, I, one question. So, not to embarrass my children, but we were around when the cohort first came in, and one of the big issues was that connection between the middle school and the high school. And the cohort program itself has done great things, as you've shown, but it also had kind of become something that was necessary because of a gap that had grown between middle school and high school. And so, you know, what you've done is fantastic. The question is, how do you knit that together? Or how is what you're doing kind of articulated with the middle school curriculum, so that, I think it's a shared responsibility to get these kids where they need to be by junior year. And so, as you revamped this, how does that connect, or what implications does it have for the middle school curriculum, or just kind of, I mean, how's it all fit?
No, that's a great question. I definitely am trying to continue the relationships that Jake Martin built with the middle schools over the two years prior to me, that our literacy coaches, we started meeting with the middle schools once every couple of months, in order to kind of check in with the cohort kids. So, in May of last year, we said, you know, here, who are the kids coming to us? Tell us a little bit more about them, rather than just their explore scores or their MAP scores. What are their deficiencies? How can we reach them? You know, from getting anecdotes about them being drummers, or that you've got to reach them through music, or if you sit this kid with this kid, there's going to be a problem. But beyond that, I, we started talking about, what does it mean to work with kids who struggle in literacy? What are some skill, what are some things that they're afraid of? Do they speak up in class? Are there kids who, who need a little bit more one-on-one attention? Do we need to break in and do smaller groupings with some of them? And so, this year, we went back in the fall, I think it was the end of October, beginning of November, saying, "Here's how those kids have done so far. Here's the kids that have been really successful. Here are some kids that are struggling." So, the eighth grade teachers can start to put in their minds, what are those, yeah, like, what do we need to now catch? If it's that sort of range of student, what do we need to put in place to make sure that they don't have those same struggles? We actually go back in March, and then we'll go back in May, and that's Elizabeth Farran, Christina Fitzgerald, and I, my literacy team.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I also think, from a curriculum standpoint, we'll be bringing to the new English Language Arts curriculum in March. And I think, you know, that's a guaranteed curriculum for all three of our middle schools. And we're also in the middle of having conversations with our reading specialists about the best way to support kids that need that intervention. And, you know, we're really looking at, how do we provide intervention for kids? You know, part of the great thing about the academic literacy is that we know when a student needs to be, need an intervention, they need it immediately. Cannot be an invitation, has to occur within the school day, student needs to be there. And that's exactly what this academic literacy class provides. So, how do we mirror that at the middle school? We're in the middle of those conversations.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the update, and the enthusiasm, and the matriculation throughout the district, to help our students all along the way. I have a couple of questions, or remind us of, this is cohort, these are students coming from eighth grade to ninth grade, and then what does it look like moving into 10th, 11th, 12th?
That's a great question. Next year, we're implementing a co-taught sophomore academic literacy section for kids who, in academic literacy, they're still struggling to keep up with their peers. Beyond that, we have a class called literacy skills. It's a semester-long class, and we work on sort of a pre-teach, reteach model of either English 10, English 11, or English 12, based on kind of the makeup of the course. Right now, it's heavily vocabulary-based, learning structures, and also learning relationships, particularly in the area of research. We find that our kids, if we can hook them with a topic that they're interested in, they're going to then work on research, and they're going to want to know how things connect. And so, we're, we're excited to have academic literacy co-taught for the first time for sophomores, to kind of help those still strugglers to transition. And then, we have literacy skills beyond that. We also have a class called assessment seminar for kids who may only be struggling with the literacy part of standardized tests. So, because some of our kids are great readers, because they have all of the time in the world in order to do it. But, you know, we all know the test-taking reading is such a different animal than, you know, reading for pleasure, or, you know, reading for class. And so, assessment seminar has been really successful with those kids. So, that's kind of our program leading from there. If academic literacy is successful in the co-taught model for sophomores this year, I hope to then bring a course, you know, to junior year, so that we can keep supporting our kids that are just below where we need them to be.
Thank you for the comprehensive look.
Yeah, you're welcome.
The, you know, content, as well as the students, and the, you know, all of the principal institute days that we keep hearing about, which is assessing the students, kind of, I'm going to call it, you know, as Chris Bloom has said, we're, you know, building the, we're flying the plane as we build it. And that's really kind of what it is, right? You're always assessing where the students, what do we need to help them with to move them along, and so that we, that they can achieve that success.
Yeah.
For themselves, which builds the momentum.
Yeah, we assess their reading monthly, so that we're always kind of tracking to see how far we can, you know, push them. Now that we've achieved this, what's the next step?
So, with respect to that comprehensive look, Michelle, I think you had mentioned, we're not only looking at the general education population, the cohort now. And I noticed there's non-IEP and IEP. And so, the key piece, and this is the part, Michelle, that you had talked to us a little bit about, if there's anything more to share, which is really great to get the special education, general ed, I mean, all the teachers. It's just a teacher's a teacher, a student's a student, and what other, what help do they need? And so, that all the students get the benefit of the same curriculum, but what do they need for, you know, groupings that are similar, or individually, that are unique, to help them move along in the education process?
Yeah, and we think that this format will allow them to stay, you know, for the full 50 minutes in their general education class, and then we can provide those scaffolds in the other 50 minutes. And so, it really does become hitting them early in the day with that pre-teach, so they feel confident going into it, and that they can be either with their peers or leading some of their peers at times. And for those kids that still struggle, we get them the next morning, so that we can then do some reteaching there. And I think that you're right with that, it's not my kids in my classroom, it's our kids. And that's why I do think that collaboration section of not only the co-teachers, but all four pairs of co-teachers, plus the world studies and English 9 team, having the same collaboration period, so that we can make sure that everyone is on the same page, and that we're able to target interventions, not based on discrepancies from classroom to classroom, but this is how the team is moving forward.
And then, just to clarify, so the students that are in cohort, they get the access to all the subject areas. So, they do get science right away, freshman year, just like all other students. Okay. One last question, sorry, is around, as Jim had said, about four years ago, we heard about the cohort. And I know your numbers are general average numbers.
Yeah.
Four years ago, we saw bands. And in the top band of students, we saw the program really didn't help them. So, I'm sorry, I didn't ask you upfront, but what did we do for those students? Because they needed some help, but different help than the typical cohort program.
Yeah, and I think for this current model, that we actually are able to reach those kids a little bit more, only because that by having all of the instructors during the same period, that if we do have those kids that are right on that border, that we're able to provide them with enrichment opportunities that get them to be a little bit more of independent learner. Sometimes, when kids have issues with reading, it's not necessarily their ability to read, it's the background knowledge that they have about that topic. So, we can use those leveled readings to build their schema, in order to get them to progress even further. Sometimes, it's just a matter of organization, it's a matter of having, being in a large class and feeling lost. And so, for those kids, we can target them much more specifically, because we can, when we break that, those 88 kids into eight different sections of 10, that were, or 11, I'm sorry, I'm not a really good math, but that we're able to target specific, either main idea, supporting detail, or grade level, or content. Because now that they're in science, we're not going to be able to, we're going to have to add in roots, because a lot of science reading is based on scientific roots, and so that's going to have to become a component, because those kids are then going to be, start struggling with science. And so, that becomes something else that we target in those groups.
Miss, it's the last question.
No, it's okay.
Darn it, I lost it. Oh, well, sorry.
You can email me. I'm always fingertips away.
How do you get feedback from employee, the faculty, et cetera? Because I know that that was something that we had talked about four years ago, too.
Yeah, actually, I meet with the literacy coaches weekly, and our literacy coaches are also the ones that teach academic literacy. We also meet as a cohort team pretty regularly. Actually, in coming up with, how do we, how do we want to re-envision the program? You know, I sat down with all of the teachers, and Chris Covino, Jess Weldon, and Mike DeNovo, in order to, you know, get feedback. What do we feel is working? What do we feel is not working? What are some struggles that we have? What are some things that you're afraid about with a change? What are some things that you're excited about with a change? And we kind of worked through several models, together as a team, before, you know, talking about it then at IAC, talking about it with, you know, Principal Smith and Dr. Covino. So, we, you know, being in the class, or being in the office with social studies and English, you know, I'm in pretty deep contact with them. And so, they've been, they've been really good at offering feedback and kind of problem-solving when this part isn't working, or, you know, "We need to move this kid into gen ed English. He's already at the 10th grade level. I've talked to him, I've talked to his teacher," and then we've moved them at the semester. We started the year with 66 students, and currently have 58, because of the progress that those eight kids have made during first semester.
Feedback from the community, parents, students?
Yeah, we did put out surveys at the end of last year, to ask students who had been in the program and who are currently in the program, what works? What do you feel? How did it help you? If it didn't feel like it helped you? And so, we kind of went through that qualitative feedback, as we started developing the new model as well. Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Kathy's going to explain a little bit of background on something that is going to be brought to the board at the next meeting, in the form of a resolution for approval. And it has to do with some reorganization of SACID. I wanted to make sure, Ryan sounded like a pretty bright guy, and if he's as bright as he sounded, he's going to be leaving now. So, I wanted to, I wanted to make sure that I just thanked him and anybody else associated with this reorganization for all their great work. I think this is a lot of terrific stuff, and it was nicely done. So, thank you.
SACID currently is a joint agreement, as you know, and each of our member districts has a representative which attends the board of control meeting. A district can either send one of its elected board members, or ask the superintendent to serve in that capacity. For the last seven months, SACID has been looking into a new opportunity that was put forth by ISPE, I believe, that said a joint agreement could become a legal entity of its own. So, the board of control that is currently in place doesn't change its function and the role that it is, had, has been taking. The significant difference is entering into a legal entity allows the SACID to ask, act as its own fiscal agent. For the last 17 years, I believe, District 66, which is one of the member districts of SACID, has operated as the financial or fiscal agent on SACID's behalf. So, by entering into, or by putting forth the resolution for the member districts to agree that SACID would become its own entity, that would allow SACID to act as its own fiscal agent. That does change a little bit, again, the SACID board of control would stay in its existing structure, but it would require SACID then to develop a governing board. And I think, Karen, you were there at one of the early meetings when they talked about this. This has been several meetings of the last several months, and Al Shraga, who is SACID attorney, also happens to be one of the partners in the district's attorney that we use for special education as well. So, he's presented on what that means. Really, by having this other board of control, their main function, it's only two things. One, a final approval on the financial budget, after it's gone through the current process with the board of control. And then, in the event, and it will be happening soon, because I believe Michael Volpe does step down in a couple of years for retirement, their other role would be hiring the executive director for SACID. The other little significant difference of, a superintendent cannot serve on the board of control, an elected member has to. So, if a board, if one of the member districts is currently sending a superintendent, which is what we're doing here in District 205, they would still need to send an elected official to the board of control. And if the district is currently sending an elected official, it can be the same elected official, or it can be a different member of their board of education. The board of control, as the bylaws as being proposed, which you'll see before you, before next board meeting, does list that the anticipated frequency at which the new governance board would meet would be once a year in May, to approve the budget. If for some reason that budget wasn't approved in May, they would come back in September to finish that. And I think that was based on some state funding and things that might change from May to September. That's the gist of it. It doesn't change, I think the important thing to remember of the resolution, which needs a two-third member vote to pass, would be that it doesn't change the current rule that the current board of control, which has always been in place, what function and capacity they do, does not change.
I have a question, just to clarify. The board of control and the governing board, both of those would be elected officials?
No. Currently, the board of control, which we have.
Yeah.
There is a representative from each of the member districts. And a member district can choose to send its superintendent, which is what we have done. The board of control, I'm sorry, the governing board can only be elected officials. But that would only meet the once a year, anticipated.
So, the board of control doesn't change?
Correct.
So, you can still send a superintendent to the board?
Correct.
Okay, because I had written that in the wrong place. All right.
The schedule of fees that we pay for services, that's a function, then, of the budgeting process in the governance board, then? Is that, or the board of control?
The schedule of fees would still be recommended through the board of control. That is brought to, in this case, myself, and we determine what specific services. In other words, not every district uses the same services. We determine what is needed. And we do that about this time of year. And then, they bill us accordingly. Basically, we enter into a contract. It's based on number of days, and that's different than what we might pay in tuition for a student attending a public, one of the public day programs through SACID.
That function of establishing the rates and everything is a function of the governing board?
The board of control, which is currently in place, yes.
That drives the budget?
Exactly.
Okay. Okay. So, it's kind of a pro forma?
The Board of Control would still be creating and doing all of the pre-work on the budget. The final approval would come from the governing board.
Okay.
So, I'm, I'm trying to dissect the Board of Controls and the governing board. And I'm trying to, I'm trying in my mind to make analogies of their roles. So, my first analogy that I went with, and correct me on this, please, for the governing board is, this governing board is acting more as a, you know how you're not supposed to describe something using the word?
Good luck.
Yeah. Their, this Board of Controls is acting more as, more administrative, and the governing board is acting, and the governing board is acting more as advising. Is that a, or advising, or, or policy?
I would say the, the current Board of Control. The SACID administrators advise the current Board of Control. I would compare that maybe to our cabinet and the role that our Board of Education plays.
Okay.
And they would make a recommendation specifically on those two functions. The final approval of the budget and the hiring of an executive director.
Okay.
Those are the, the governing board, which would be new, is limited to those two specific functions.
Okay.
Everything else would stay as it is currently with the Board of Control.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Chris? No.
Yeah, I mean, I think we talked about last board meeting. We covered the PMA, which is the line share. But we, I think we covered everything except there were some additional things that you wanted to talk about as it pertained to state funding. I think so. I'll turn it over to Mr. Welton.
So, this Finance Committee meeting was January 13th. So, we, we did have a preliminary look at the tentative staffing and PMA projections that were presented January 26th. And we, we discussed the December financials where we're tracking in line with budget. And then, we also talked about this State Board of Ed proposal for the, for the 2017 year. It's been in the newspaper. I've, I put a couple of the newspaper articles in the, in the board docs for you. But, this is the actual numbers, the calculation that the State Board of Ed did for District 205. And the, the general state aid portion, which has currently a foundation level of 6,119, is currently that number 3,178,964. That's at the current prorated amount of 92%. And then, the, the 2017 number, the new foundation level would be 6,327. And with that, they assumed it to be funded at 100%. So, with that, it's a net gain of 426,653. And in order to do that, they were eliminating this line funding for children requiring special education services of 994,901. So, that line item was eliminated, and that results in the net loss to District 205 of The general state aid formula, as you know, has the, is a formula that helps to create equity for those districts that don't have as much local funding. So, so by, so this, this taking the amount from the special ed line and moving it into the general state aid line creates the winners and losers. The suburban districts with more local funding end up being on the losing end of this. It's, I mean, the 568,248 is not nearly as bad as the Minar bill from last year, the Senate Bill 1, which had us losing 4.7 million. But it still creates winners and losers and divides public schools. And so, so, so Dave, could you put up the Vision 2020? In Vision 2020, they're talking, they talk more about not doing that, holding, holding the districts harmless. This, the state solution should not create winners and losers, and instead should ensure no school district will get less state funding than they already receive. This concept of hold harmless should be a cornerstone of any legislation passed in the General Assembly and sent to the governor. So, so, Dave, I don't want to steal your thunder, but I know at Luda, we talked about, or Mike Jacoby talked about the evidence-based adequacy model that Vision 2020 is supporting. And in that model, they're, they're holding, holding harmless, or the, the funding for, for the school districts with more local funding would be held harmless, and their state funding would be held constant while they bring the, the school districts with less local funding up. So, this, this model is more of a bottom-up, where the Minar bill and the current, and that budget proposal by the State Board of Ed is kind of a top-down, bottom-up, where the Vision 2020 model, holding the, the, the school districts harmless, is a more of a bottom-up model. That's really what, all I wanted to talk about as far as this proposal.
Karen?
So, bottom line is, they're trying to show that, you know, we get more money from GSA, but if you look at it, they're really taking that money from our special education students, the money that's allocated. So, we go back to 19, what, '75, when the IDEA, you know, Act got passed, and it was supposed to be, what, up to 40% funding? And we, we've never received any more than 12%. And the state is even less. So, what really is the state and the federal government doing for not only our students, but especially our special education students?
Chris might answer this in a little bit more detail. It, it is true that the, the funding that's supposed to follow a lot of these laws really doesn't come. So, that, that's a very accurate statement. However, the laws still exist. So, so we would, we wouldn't be cutting back on our services. You know, so, so we would still have to provide the legally obligated services that we provide now. We just wouldn't get the categorical allotment, that, that money's getting washed back into the funding formula. So, in essence, we would have to redistribute the way we budget to make sure we're still providing those services with, with less funds, if that makes.
And it does make sense. And thank you for the response. It's, it's really educating our community about what's really going on for our students in education. And that's why I made the statement. They aren't supporting us. They aren't supporting our students. Not the way that they promised. And that's what we should be advocating for.
So, my question here, and I know, no one, the challenge of winners and losers. I think the theory was that there were losers before. Because, I mean, the thought was that some students, some districts weren't, weren't able to get the funds that they needed. I guess I'm wondering with this, this, this 20, Vision 2020 that you have up here, where everyone appears to win. Okay? Well, everyone is held harmless. Okay. Everyone is held harmless in this model. How does that, how would that accommodate those districts who are currently struggling?
The way it works is the, the, those districts with the least amount of local funding are the, receive the money first. And so, it's, it's, the idea is that there would be more funding, more, more funding, you know? And they don't really talk about where that funding is coming from. But it's new funding. And, and that money goes to those school districts with the least amount of local funding first. And the school districts with local funding are held harmless.
And I, I obviously, I mean, I say that obviously our priority is our district, but I also like try to look globally and, and see how are we going to help all the students? And, and what does this model do for all of our students? So, that was the basis of my question.
And, and when we were at the, the Luda Conference in, in Springfield, there were definitely districts in that situation that you described. And they definitely preferred Minar's bill that takes from the top. And they preferred that because they need money soon and now, and are concerned that there wouldn't nearly be enough funding for the evidence-based adequacy model. And so, they preferred Minar's bill, where we would prefer the, the Vision 2020, where we're held harmless.
Is there more for the, from the Luda Conference? Or?
Yeah, there is a little bit. You know, as Chris mentioned, we were in Springfield on Thursday and Friday. And the, he did cover some of the things that, that were discussed. So, I'm not going to reiterate that. But I think it's important to...
Just for the benefit of people at home who might not know what Luda is, Large Unit District Association?
Correct.
I'm sorry.
Correct. Actually, what I was going to do is explain just a little bit what the term evidence-based funding means. So, I, so I skipped over Luda, but I was going to actually, because that, that term is something that, you know, that can mean a lot of things. And so, it's a different way of looking at schools where you take a look at the population of poverty, special ed kids. What does it take to fund programming for gifted students? They take a look at effect size research, and they take a look at best instructional practices for interventions, for a variety of different, a variety of different things. So, it is, number one, research-based, and then indexed to poverty and some things like Chris said. So, so there are a lot of other factors that go into it that they would have to put into a formula when they, when they run the money through and say, who gets what? But the idea is, is to start with the concept of determining what do you actually need to provide an adequate education for a child? And what they're trying to do is come up with a number that represents adequacy and, and not focus quite as much on equity. But try to get everybody at least minimally at adequacy. And then, if local districts are fortunate to have the resources and their taxpayers choose and say, we're willing to provide and support all these things, you know, go ahead, run with it, more power to you. So, that's a little bit of what they mean by evidence-based. We did hear Senator, I'm looking here, Jason, I think it's Jason, was it Jason? Yeah. Jason Berekman, who is the person who has the other bill that is essentially the, a bill that represents this type of a concept as opposed to the Minar bill. And so, he presented, he presented and talked about it. And then, as Chris said, Mike Jacoby, who is the Executive Director for Illinois Association of School Business Officials, went into a lot more detail about how that funding formula might look. So, actually, of the, of the Luda conferences that I've been to in recent years, this, this one I felt was pretty, pretty informative and worthwhile. The other, the other thing that I just want to highlight is that there's an Illinois Balanced Accountability Measure that redefines how we're going to define accountability to mean more than just reliance on a single annual standardized test score. So, what it does, and, and without getting into a lot of detail, but we talk in our district plan, the concept of balanced assessment. And this basically is trying to incorporate a lot of the other things that are in teacher evaluation and principal evaluation in law about having a more balanced approach so that there is attainment measures, but, and growth measures. And then, also indicators of goal attainment at the local level, professional practices at the local level. And so, it's, it's a much more comprehensive view of accountability than just a single test score. So, there, there was a, I think, a very good presentation by the Galesburg Superintendent, who's on that committee at the state level, about what that model entails. And I, I, I thought that would probably be the other thing I would highlight from the
Okay, what about the joint conference? Oh, go ahead. Do you have a question? Go ahead.
Dave, there's, I mean, there's a lot of politics, at the risk of stating the obvious in Springfield. The sense of the likelihood that any of these pass, you know, I mean, you've, you've got a dysfunctional group of people down there. I mean, and a lot of people are horse-trading with things. And some would argue that this bill is basically a hammer over the heads of the suburban districts to support a tax increase statewide to try to get some of their money back. So, I'm just trying to figure out if anybody down there had an opinion on whether this ISPE budget and the formula change has, what the likelihood is that that might, might actually pass.
Yeah, I would say a couple of things to that. First of all, just as a side note, the Balanced Accountability Measure, Governor Rauner did sign that. So, that is law. As far as the funding, yeah, it's anybody's guess. And Chris is more in tune with that because he talks to his people a lot. But just because that's the first thing that the state floated out there, I mean, for, for, for that, to get through the legislative process and everything, to me, that's anybody's guess. And the political motivations behind it, I guess we could all speculate, but I don't know. Did you want to add to that, or?
I, I'm definitely not going to figure out, or have a forecast for Springfield. But there definitely is a lot more discussion about changing the funding formula. And I think they, I think they did talk about this being a better time for that to happen. And I don't understand all the politics behind it. If it were to happen, that this year would be a good time for that to happen. But I couldn't tell you if it would or not. I can tell you that the Hold Harmless bill is a lot better for District 205 than these other ones, the winners and losers.
Well, assuming that the state has money somewhere on a tree that they have been hiding. But, I mean, they don't have any money anyway. It's great to tell you it will make you whole, but, but ultimately, that has to come from somewhere.
Yeah.
You know, the other question is, is, so pension shift still running around out there? So, you hit the suburban districts with the loss of funding because of the formula change, and then, when's that come? You know, that, that's, I guess, the frustrating part is, is it's kind of, they're not solving the whole problem. So, I was just, it sounds, it sounds like, you know, there's no crystal ball here, and they're kind of, they're playing their game with it.
Well, I, I just wanted to make sure that the board understood the, the State Board of Ed proposal and its impact on the district. And just, this is just for information, not, just so that we all understand what is going, what these bills are about.
Senator Berekman did, I mean, he didn't really try to shy away from the fact that there would have to be new revenue. You know, and, and, you know, he did talk about finding money and doing different kinds of things, but he made a direct statement about different types of revenue increases through different types of taxes or, you know, just, I mean, they're, they're not trying to pretend that that doesn't have to be part of the, you know, part of the equation. Now, obviously, what passes, or where that comes from, or, you know, I mean, I don't think any, they're, they're only scheduled, and I put this in my report, I think they said they're only scheduled to meet three times in March. So, I mean, I don't, I don't know what that means, the legislature. So, I, you know, I don't know what that means. know what that means.
But in the bottom line is, though, I mean, are they really, are we really okay with them taking away money from our most needy students? I mean, that's what they're saying and proposing. We need to communicate that to people if people don't know, so that they can advocate.
Chris, now, this money that they're, that was for, um, our special education, they took that away from, they're proposing, proposing to take that away everywhere in the state. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Um, and then the, I'm wondering, on the wisdom, have, is this, was Illinois unique in having this? Or is there some, where, if you can talk about where this trend may have come from? I can't imagine that Illinois is the first ones that have thought of this. But maybe they are.
Well, this is definitely an Illinois thing, not a national thing.
Right. But I'm wondering, this trend of, of instead of having things divided out and just having one big state fund, because it sounds like that's what they're moving toward, this idea of one big, one big pot of money.
No, this is, this, uh, this special ed line is just one of several special ed lines that they are proposing to, to move or to eliminate, I guess, or...
Okay.
Transfer up to general state aid.
Okay. Before, but to that point, though, there's grant money, I mean, there's all kinds of pools of money.
This particular special ed line is a formula-based special ed line. So I think that's why they decided to target this particular special ed revenue line.
By contrast, on the backside of the ISBE flyer, there's non-GSA budget recommendations. And the second bullet point lists a series of budget increases for ISBA. Are these ISBE-administered distributions of money to local school boards? Or is it the state spending the money separate and apart from what we do? Because there are substantial increases in some of this stuff. And where's that money coming from?
So I think you're looking at the mandated categorical reimbursement line. It says increased, we definitely would see an increase there, the early childhood. We get, we do get early childhood funding, which it says here would increase. So bilingual, we get bilingual funding. This, that line focused on the community, we don't, we don't get that. The regional safe schools, we're not getting any of that money. Educator quality and support, we're not getting that. Those are the lines you're looking at, right? We do, we would get increases for the mandated categoricals, the early childhood, and the bilingual there.
Do any of those increases soften the pain if this other part comes through?
The State Board of Ed didn't, didn't, they only did, they only looked at those two lines. They didn't show us, they didn't quantify this to the local district level, how much these increases would be.
Okay. We've tabled the next item a few times, the joint conference. And I know Karen sent a, a presentation from the joint conference. Did you want to talk about that for a few minutes? Or is... It was about cultures. It was a very good, very good PowerPoint presentation. But, you know, don't, I'm not putting pressure on you at all. I just know that you had sent that to the board. And so did John.
Um, yes, I did send out a document that represents a session that I went to at the triple I conference. And it was really about cultures. So there's, there was, it was titled Closing the Gaps Between What Sounds Good and What Gets Done. And it really talks about the, the psychological and social elements of culture and, and having a positive, healthy culture, where everyone is working together as a team, and, um, and, and what some obstacles are to that. So that's why I wanted to share it with the board. I wanted to share it. Thank you, Shannon. I'm sorry, I acted like I wasn't prepared. I mean, I, um, we, we've, I wasn't sure we were going to get to it again this meeting. But in, in any case, you know, so that we can share that with the community. Because, you know, four years ago, we, um, we had the Harris survey go out. I mean, we really want to work on culture. And so I, so this is important for us to know, the community and board members. I mean, at some point, we really should kind of talk, take a look at this, not only the document, but, you know, Jim Bearden, he's, he's got, you know, education background, business background, consulting background. And, you know, he really gets to helping people address, um, just the basic human elements of what stops you from having the culture you want. And that's kind of my assessment.
It's funny, because what Karen highlighted, there was another very interesting seminar titled Civil Decision Making. And it was the same type of concept on how you bring all of those different parties, the role of the board, the role of the, the administration, the role of the educators, and the role of the public, how you bring all of those together, and that you can have civil decision-making, and you can work together, and the benefits of that. And then recognizing, recognizing different styles, different, different processes, how people process information differently, recognizing that and respecting that. So again, I thought that was another key piece of, um, that was discussed. You know, a lot of information was talking about the trustee role of the board. But it also wrote down and broke down the public values, and, and that was a key concept. Another key concept was, um, this ideal that we are different and that we process information differently. And some, you know, the whole, you know, Myers-Briggs, if you will, on how you process information, and how do you get your point across to people who process information differently than you while still respecting that. And that was, you know, another key piece in this concept. And I think it ties perfectly to Karen's point about making sure we have, we're, have an enhanced and improved culture.
Margaret, is there any information that you can share with us beyond that? Okay, thank you.
I can send you the presentation as we speak.
Just to summarize, I attended the, a session, very interesting, presented by folks from District 200 in Wheaton, who went through a community process similar to ours. And the title was After Community Engagement, Then What? And I got the materials, I sent them around to all of you, to administration. Malia, Malia and I had a short conversation. She says, "Oh yeah, I have that stuff, and I've been following it as we focus our, our community engagement process to the assembly of data and preparing a, a plan." And I think Dave identified that it's going to come out with, uh, some, ultimately result in a, in a similar product. But it's a very impressive process that, that brings us to a point where we're all focused and operating on the same, uh, uh, plan, if you will, different names for it. But it was a very interesting, uh, presentation. I suggest, you know, take a look at, at what they did there. It was the way they came up with a one-page plan, you know, broken down into five categories of, with specific steps in each. And it was just a really good reference to, not quite fit on a T-shirt, but on one piece of paper. And that is a good thing to have, to keep everybody moving in the same direction.
Superintendent's action items. There are two items for approval tonight.
Yeah, I'm going to turn this over to Dave Smith. But just by way of introduction, we have had some recent bandwidth issues and other filtering types of issues that have crept into our operations. And Dave's going to explain why we believe that this is necessary. But I just don't want to lose sight of the fact that when the district made a decision to implement what we call MLI, as, as large scale as we did in grade six through 12, I think that we have had a lot of success and very few real major issues. Now, we've had some inconveniences recently that have affected the classroom a little bit, and that's been very troubling us because obviously we don't ever want that to happen. But for the most part, we have had a very solid first year to date, considering the magnitude of what we tried to do. Most districts would not take that on at, at that scale. So I think, I, I just want to compliment tech and our instructional coaches and our teachers and everybody else who has been involved in trying to make this happen. That being said, when, when you do things for the first time, you learn some things. So we have been learning some things. So, Dave?
Yeah, thanks, Dave. And thanks for allowing me to inject this recommendation onto this agenda tonight, because I know normally this would come at the end of the month, but I felt it was important to try to move as quickly as possible. Essentially, the, the web filter that we have right now in place, it's been here, this is the, the fifth year, perhaps, in, in service. And we were actually scheduled to retire that this summer and replace it anyhow. And we, as we got into the fall, we started seeing some, we found a particular resource constraint in the web filter that we have. And we just, it just has, it's, pardon the tech, the tech speak, but it was basically simultaneous SSL connections. There's a very specific resource that, constraint that we discovered. And there's honestly not much we can do about it with that device, other than replace the device with a new, a newer, higher-capacity device. So we had, my, my team started looking into options in the fall, and we started evaluating a couple of options. And with the idea that we would actually, I would eventually recommend actually accelerating that replacement during the school year, just to get it, to get us to move forward. So in that process, we also had some other activities on the network and some other analysis that we had done on network traffic and discovered that there, we also would benefit from what's called an intrusion prevention system. It's really a threat detection and prevention system. So you look for traffic that really doesn't belong in your network, maybe it's virus activity, malware, possibly somebody's installed some, an app or an extension that you really don't want to have operating within your network, but it kind of goes on detected because of the way those things tend to work. And we started to see that we had some of that going on by using some tools that were being demonstrated by some vendors in our network. So the, the two things that we really concluded over the winter was, we need to upgrade our web filter appliance, and we need to incorporate this, what's called IPS, this intrusion prevention system in our network. It's the best, I think safest and most prudent thing to do for our staff and our students going forward. And we evaluated a system from Palo Alto, as well as Cisco Systems. And they're both very, very, very strong companies with excellent products. And we had a pretty thorough eval, evaluation of that. And in the end, my team and I wanted to bring forward the recommendation to go with the Palo Alto system. It's engineered to last several years, many years, really. It's probably admittedly over-engineered right now, but we know that we're adding more technology to, to the network, and it will, the use will just continue to grow. So we didn't want to come up short again, like, within a couple of years. So we really have tried to spec this to last, like, a three-to-five-year timeframe. And I just wanted to give you a little bit of background on that, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I need a motion.
I move that the Board of Education approve the purchase of a Palo Alto PA 5060 web filter and intrusion prevention system for $188,396 for three years of licensing and support, plus professional services not to exceed $8,000.
Is there a second? Moved by John, seconded by Jim. Any discussion?
Just, this is already built into tech budget for next year. It was going to be done over the summer. It's being advanced. So it's just a matter of a little lower fund balance for, for, at the end of the year. And I assume we're not within $188,000 of...
Correct. And, and just to, just to maybe add to that slightly, as in the budget projections, I've been working with Mr. Walton, I have withheld a certain, whatever the difference was, I've withheld it in next year's budget and the technology budget. So essentially, we're shifting the expenditure up by, by six months. Yeah.
Thank you for the responsiveness, too, Dave.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Bastido?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Upner? Yes. It's seven ayes, no nays. That motion passes. We have approval of donation from Lincoln Elementary School.
Yeah, this doesn't require as much explanation, but the PTA at Lincoln has been interested in, um, increasing the Chromebook capacity, or iPad capacity, or whatever technology capacity you want to call it, at that school. And we had been encouraging them to please hold off until we get a little bit further along in our pilot program and have a better idea what we think will work at the elementary grade levels. And so we had presented recently that, and I think at the last meeting, but I'm not sure exactly which month it was, but that we had decided that in grades four and five, that we did indeed believe that Chromebook, Chromebooks were the right device. And so this is just simply honoring their request to go ahead and, and purchase those at Lincoln.
Is there a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the donation of a class set of Chromebooks and Chromebook charging cart to Lincoln School in an amount not to exceed $8,000. This donation is accepted in accordance with Policy 880, Gifts to the District.
Is there a second? Moved by Karen, seconded by Jim. Go ahead.
So we wanted to thank the, the Lincoln School, PTA, and the community for supporting our efforts in bringing technology into the classroom and helping enhance the education for our students.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Bastido?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Upner? Yes. It's seven ayes, no nays. That motion passes. We have upcoming meetings on Thursday, 6 o'clock. 6 o'clock Learning and Teaching Committee meeting. That time was changed from 7 to 6. February 23rd, our next Board of Education meeting, March 8th, Board of Education meeting, and March 15th, Finance Committee meeting. We're at the end of the meeting. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Yes. A second? Thank you.
Yes.
Moved by Karen, seconded by Margaret. This meeting's adjourned. We didn't vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.